It's six thirty-one and I'd like to call this meeting of the Stockbridge Planning Board to order on April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you all for attending. I think we have a quorum of the of the Planning Board, if not the full membership. I see Nancy.
I see Nancy.
Finally.
It's not just my.
Okay.
As usual, we have some minutes to approve. I suppose in order of their dates, going with the oldest first. Let's see, we've got. Sorry, just lost my agenda.
Three fifteen.
Three fifteen. To approve the minutes of three fifteen which were distributed. Does anybody have a comment or question about those or corrections? Hearing none, can I ask Jennifer to call the roll to? Can I have a motion to approve?
I'm moving to approve.
In a second. Thank you. Jennifer, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Gary?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Marie? Marie?
Hi, I'm sorry. Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
We're good.
Thank you. Then there's the meeting, the minutes of the March sixteenth meeting. Can I have a motion to approve those?
The move.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, corrections? Hearing none. Jennifer, please call the roll.
Gary?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Kate?
Abstain.
Wayne?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Okay, that's everybody. Six to one.
Thank you. The last one is, I believe it's the February twenty-third. The agenda says the twenty-second, but I think it's the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, okay.
Those minutes. May I have a motion to approve those? Marie, I'm looking at you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions about those minutes on the twenty, our meeting of the twenty-third? Okay, Jennifer, would you please call the roll?
Gary?
Hi.
Gary, Bill?
Hi. Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Kate? Wayne?
Hi.
Wayne?
Jennifer?
Kristi?
Hi.
Okay.
Jennifer?
Okay.
Jennifer?
Yes, I heard you. Abstain.
Yep, good, thank you.
What?
Okay. The next item.
Okay.
Thank you, Jennifer. We're done with that. The next item is the special permit presented by Foresight Land for the Prospect Hill project.
And before you start, I am recusing myself on this.
Okay, thank you. Just enter that in the record, please, Jennifer.
Yep.
And who's going to speak for?
Wayne.
Project.
Wayne's gonna read it.
Sorry, that's that's correct. Wayne has to read the public notice. Please go ahead, Wayne.
In notices hereby, given that the Stockbridge Planning Board, acting as special permit granting authority, is scheduling a public hearing via remote meeting. See agenda to join for six thirty PM on Tuesday, April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. To consider the application of Mark and Mikhail Teich at Prospect Hill Road. Map two sixteen, lot thirty. To construct a driveway longer than five hundred feet under section six point one six of the Stockbridge zoning bylaws. The complete app application and plans are on file in the Planning Board Office and the Town Offices.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. I'm sorry, I keep forgetting that before these special permits. Who's going to speak for this? Application, please?
It'll be Jackson Alberdi of Foresight Land Services.
Hi, Jackson. Please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jackson Alberdi with Foresight Land Services. I'm here to represent the applicant Carol. I mean, sorry, Bethany Woods. Who's the applicant and a trustee of the the ownership of this lot. So I'll just go over the existing conditions a little bit. If I could have my, if I get a permission to share my screen.
Please do so.
Are you all able to see that?
Yes.
Very good.
The property is located on Prospect Hill Road. That's map two sixteen, lot thirty. It's located directly next to this Tennessee Gas Line. Property here. Prospect Hill Road can be seen over here on the left of the page. And property outline is shown here. This area to the east, far east, is a marsh slash bordering vegetated wetland associated with Marsh Brook. And this represents the one hundred foot buffer zone of that. And then there's a separate bordering vegetated wetland located centrally in the parcel within this existing meadow. And that's delineated by this A series line right here. And that's also has a hundred foot buffer zone around that. There's some some trees along the southern property line as well as the northeastern property line here. And that's about it for existing conditions. So I'll move down to our proposed plan here. So this special permit was submitted for the length of the driveway. As you know, the Stockbridge bylaw limits driveways to five hundred feet, and this proposed driveway is about eight hundred linear feet. It's gonna be twelve feet wide. So not a significantly wide driveway. It'll be gravel. This line down the center of it does not dictate two lanes. That's just the center line of the road for the contractor's purposes. It's currently an unoccupied residential lot with no structures on site. The floodplain line follows right along the base of this this cliff over here with this bordering vegetated wetland B series. So the main reason for the design you see in front of you is revolving around this bordering vegetated wetland located in the center of the field. In in order to avoid alteration to that bordering vegetated wetland and its buffer zone, we proposed this sweeping driveway around a close to the northern property line that wraps to the other side of the property, the the back of the lot. As you can see, this hundred foot buffer zone line comes along here and then right up along the edge of the driveway. So we did our very best to to maintain distance from the BBW and the Stockbridge Conservation Commission was very happy with that. Didn't seem to have any issues with that that design there. Erosion controls are proposed to be installed along the entire length of work. That'll be straw bales and silt fence along this area here, along the proposed house. And then straw waddles proposed along the entire driveway. There'll be vegetated swales or a vegetated swale proposed along the northern side of the driveway to handle any storm water, which will also be collected in a stormwater pipe here and discharged into a detention basin here. With a stone pervious level lip spreader. So any water that makes its way down the drive or stormwater that makes its way down the driveway through the swell into this detention basin will be allowed to pass underneath the driveway in what we've designed as a bleeder drain. So that'll be the base of the driveway will be built up in this area with three inch to six inch diameter trap rock that'll have lots of gaps in it to allow water to pass through freely, and that'll all be wrapped in filter fabric. So any sedimentation being carried through will be trapped in there. But water will be allowed to pass through underneath the driveway. Septic system is proposed right here where these were the best perks they were able to get on site. They did several other percolation tests, but this this one was the the winner. It's a approximately two two thousand square foot footprint home with a separate eight hundred square foot garage, so a relatively modest sized house. We're proposing additional stormwater mitigation for the roof runoff in the form of this infiltrator trench here, which will discharge to a stone discharge apron along with the foundation drain outside the hundred foot buffer zone. This is the location of the proposed house with this twelve foot wide turnaround here, mainly just to be able to for emergency vehicles to be able to get down, turn around and get back. They're proposing a well located right here on the on the north side of the house. And they're proposing some selective trimming outside the one hundred foot buffer zone to try to utilize their view of this nice marsh here. And that's about all I can say about about the what's proposed in our current design. Again, we've we've designed this in mind with trying to stay away from this bordering vegetated wetland as much as possible to protect the interests of the Wetlands Protection Act. And the Stockbridge Conservation Commission met with me on site and we reviewed the project and they were pretty pleased with our design and will be going in front of them, I believe, next week, April thirteenth. And yeah, can I answer any questions about this?
This is Nathan Hayward. I'm here with my wife Marilyn and we're we're in Delaware. We own the adjacent property across Prospect Hill Road at number twenty-five.
Start with the committee, maybe? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I agree, Wayne. Can we hold that, Mr. Hayward, for a few minutes till we've? The committee, the the board has addressed any question to
Excuse me.
project. I'll start with one, Jackson. You talk about drainage coming under the driveway and and sedimentation protections. What what's to? I mean, doesn't that have to be cleared out from time to time if you're catching sediment all day long? And who's responsible for that? Or or is it self-cleaning in some fashion?
Um, so the sediment will kind of build up within those rocks. But if, you know, it will be will be carried through eventually if there's any major buildup. So I don't think they're proposing any kind of clean out of that area. They would likely clean out the vegetated swale and the proposed detention basin likely once a year, which is where sediment would likely build up the most. These dotted lines shown here are the proposed filter fabric. So that will be around the driveway surface as well as the subgrade. And maybe I misled you a little bit, but the the water from the swell will be allowed to pass through this large section of trap rock underneath the driveway. Allowed to flow into our detention basin. So I don't believe the the stone underneath the driveway will ever be excavated out and sediment removed, but any sediment that builds up within the proposed basins here, located here and here. Any sediment that builds up there, I would assume will be moved or cleaned out on a annual or semi-annual basis or as needed.
Okay. Any other questions for members of the board?
I have a question.
Great.
In that same vein that you're talking, Bill, if that water goes through and there's a lot of water and it goes through the swell and and all of that, then it goes right into that vegetated wetland, correct?
It would it would pass through several layers of stone and it would be detained in both of these detention basins, giving it time to sit and let the sediment settle.
Unless there's a lot of water. Is this a hundred year flood or something? I mean, you know.
This was calculated for that, yes.
Okay.
Although this is not at all, this is not within the one hundred foot flood, a hundred foot, hundred year flood plain.
Right. And Bill asked, how do we know this is cleaned and who cleans the the, you know, so that it doesn't build up over ten years? Is that something we can put as a condition?
I would assume that would be perfect.
On.
Can we condition this to be sure that it's cleaned every? You know, whenever it's supposed to. I don't know how long that is.
Yeah, and that 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 raises the
It's all gonna be, you know, salt and whatever comes off of that driveway.
Not to mention clogs of dirt and punks of grass and who knows? I the the related question is, who who monitors that cleanup? If if we decide to impose a a cleanup condition? I guess it would be the building inspector or Marie, do you want to volunteer to do that every five years?
I don't know how to do that, Bill. Not my job.
Just checking.
No, I mean, but when we say this and everybody comes in for permits and we say, okay, good, they're gonna clean it every but they don't necessarily do that. How do we? How do we make sure that it's not gonna pollute the area because they don't clean out the?
Yeah.
You know?
Gary, did you have a thought?
Oh, it's inherently an issue, and it has been for a long time that when we put these conditions on, there's really other than the goodwill of the applicant and and what's good for their property. We really don't have a good way to enforce any of these.
You know, we have talked, I I agree with you, Gary, but we have talked about the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission joining forces and engaging at the owner's expense, I should add. A consultant who would at our direction, either the Concom or the Planning Board's direction inspect and confirm that the condition is still being met. And and as we add conditions, we we make sure that that person knows about them and knows that the condition is that they be in this particular piece or whatever is is inspected every two years or five years or whatever, whatever is appropriate. I have no idea what would be appropriate in the circumstances. But I think I think you do need, if you're going to impose conditions, seems to me they're kind of toothless if we don't have an enforcement mechanism and and that probably needs to be somebody outside either of these two bodies, the Concom or
A conservation agent? That's what they were
Yeah, some some professional.
Right.
Well, I'm I'm sure other towns have done this and we just need to explore this and and figure out whether that's that's practical or not. Do you agree, Gary?
I do. I think that it's a it's a it's an issue and and we need to to try to find some kind of a a solution and and somebody that would keep track of it in the long term because you know, properties get bought and sold all the time and, you know. So at some point, you know, you lose the thread, if you will.
Right, right. Exactly. So that's something we should follow up on.
But that doesn't mean we still shouldn't condition it if we want to tonight.
Right, and then figure out how to how to any enforcement mechanism later. I do think that there ought to be periodic inspections of this drainage.
Well, I think that's true for anybody that has a rain garden or or any kind of structure. You know, in a wetland, I mean, for one thing, it's only good sense for them to do it. Otherwise, you know, they're gonna end up with a mess on their hands. So it's in their best interest to to do the maintenance.
Right. Can I can I say something? Are we allowed in years coming to inspect the property ourself if we choose to? I mean, I we would certainly notify an owner, but as a planning board member or members, can we do that?
I don't know the answer, but we we should have that authority, it seems to me. Not to be exercised frivolously, but you know, with notice and and for some good reason, we should be able to
You could do some level of policing ourselves if we felt it was something.
My problem is, do do any of us know what excessive sedimentation that needs to be cleared out actually is?
Wayne knows.
Yeah, I I think that's why we need a professional. No offense to any of the members of this board. And so well, let's let's move on. Are there any other questions from board members about this? Yes, Christine?
I have comments and questions. I believe that we may want to postpone making a decision tonight until we can talk to our attorney and see if there's enough ability to put a condition on, but also request that there is a fund created so that there is there is some some real legal teeth to anything that we may try to impose. So that is something I think we should consider. But I have some major concerns about this project. And I am wondering, how would you describe this soil? Because it appears from the research I have done that it would be described as soggy soil. This is in in the area over the course of the lot. And there is some difficulty, I think, with the ability for it to drain. And this becomes a concern because when I was at the site visit, my feet got wet. It was that wet in the property. And we are down by three inches of rain this year, over three inches of rain. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you realize that that's fifty percent of the rainfall, I have some concerns about this site and its ability to handle additional water runoff. And related to that, you're showing us the driveway, but how tall, how high is the driveway? How much fill is going to be brought in to fill the area to make it adequate for construction vehicles?
Well, the soil on site, we did lots and lots of percolation testing and soil exploration, and you're right, it's pretty pretty clay heavy soil. So there is water pooling here and there. I will say, though, that I don't believe this project would cause any kind of you know, negative impact to storm water. The storm water currently flows its way from the northern part of this field manners its way south across the field. And we've designed our driveway to allow water to pass through underneath and not only pass through, but we'll detain that water unless there's a massive amount of water, like a hundred year flood. It would detain that water for a period of time, allowing the water to infiltrate through and sediment to come out of the water and remain in those those basins there. And in terms of fill, I can, I don't have an exact calculation for you right now in terms of cubic yards, but I could try to come up with one for you soon. But in terms of fill, this is the proposed grades of the driveway. So there'll be a section of fill located next to the road. This would be Prospect Hill Road right here on on the left. And the driveway would make its way down across the field, matching existing grade as much as possible. Apart from a little bit of gravel, which will be in a crown shape to allow water to flow from the center line of the road. So as you can see, there's we've designed it with a very minimal fill required. Small cuts, small fills. So any any areas that do need to be filled will be filled with whatever is cut from the site is there's these small areas of of cut. And any additional fill will be brought in, clean fill, and that would likely only be needed if at all in in this small area here next to the road. The rest of the driveway basically matches existing grade. All your question.
Are you planning to use the fulfill the soil that you take from digging the foundation and constructing the house? So it would be that kind of soil that you're using for the base of the road?
Yes, I absolutely, they would absolutely utilize all of the the soil from onsite before they decided to bring in any kind of any kind of fill and and pay for that to be brought in. That can get pretty expensive. So I think ideally, they would use whatever's excavated out for the foundation and like I showed you in that profile, those small areas where small areas of cut. So I believe I don't I don't have an exact cubic yard calculation for you at the moment, but I believe they'd have more than enough fill to fill in this small section here next to the road.
But Jackson, there's nothing on this site right now, right?
Nope, it's completely undeveloped at the moment.
So the driveway has to be built before the house? So they can't use construction, you know, fill from the from the house to build the driveway, can they?
My guess is they would likely not finish the driveway until construction on the house is mostly complete, or at least the foundation is complete. So they would likely lay down a temporary gravel surface along here to get into this area and build the the house.
Well, that's I guess the question of, does the temporary driveway comply with or or does it have the same measures of runoff protection that the the permanent driveway would have?
They would not likely have the basins that would probably be installed as they're building the driveway, but all of these erosion controls would be in place before any work commences.
All right. Any other quick, Gary, I think I throw your hand up?
Nancy can go.
Oh, I just had a quick question. Um, so have you talked with the highway superintendent? I know, I think you talked with the police or the fire department. And then the police for emergency access to the property and they all approved it?
We we sent this plan to them the same day we submitted it to you. Which looks like it was no, February twenty-sixth. So we submitted to them on that date and we haven't heard any additional comments since then. Nothing to report there.
So does that mean that we have to do that? We have to get permission from the superintendent and?
No.
No, that's they have to do
As required. If they wanted to comment, I would hope they would have done so within the last month.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Gary?
Jackson, you, we talked to you the other day about the the trees. Did did anything happen with maybe reconfiguring the driveway so you didn't cut down so many of those big trees?
Um, basically, we've decided to stick with this current design. Moving the driveway closer to the sweatland to keep it outside of cutting any trees down, we'd likely be with the grading and the utilities, we'd likely be within thirty to twenty-five feet of the bordering vegetated wetland, which generally doesn't fly with the Stockbridge Conservation Commission. So we've chosen this route. And it does require taking down about five mature trees, all all white pines. And we believe that's the most ecologically sensitive way to do this. But if if you'd like to see any kind of plantings to replace those trees or any other kind of plantings, the applicant is very happy to do so.
Okay. And then my my other comment is just that would they be willing to, should this driveway be approved? Put something in this that says that it could never be eroded? And that the lot could never be subdivided?
I think they'd be absolutely fine with that. Their intention is to just create a quiet, single family house lot. With the, the view of their, their, the marsh back here.
I mean, I, I like to think out a little ways and maybe not them, but maybe the next person that owns it, you know?
Understood. Yeah, I think, I think that's a fine idea.
While you're at it, Jackson, would they be willing to put their house closer to, up along the road and forget about this driveway?
That, I don't think they'd be on board with. Yeah, we think putting the house right up next to the, the road just doesn't quite fit the, you know, fit the character. Of the neighborhood. Most of the other houses onsite have a, are kind of setback from the road. And the, the applicants purchased this property to try to have a view of some wildlife in the area. And so they, they decided rather than putting it right up on the road, they would try to get it into the back of the lot, out of view.
The wildlife won't be there if they are. You know, if they put a house in there, they're cutting off a whole area of going from that vegetated wetland. That you, you know, that they, down to the lake or down to the swamp. Right in the middle of a wild land area. It's a house in the middle of one of the few fields in the town.
If I, if I may say so, I don't think there's going to be a lot of mammal traffic back and forth. From this marsh to this bordering vegetated wetland. There's about a 35 or.
The way around.
There.
Down to the marsh.
Yep, so I think providing some natural passage along the southern end here. And tried to stay as much away from the wetlands as possible to keep this ecologically sensitive. But thank you for your concerns.
I have an additional question about the construction. And this construction is going to take place in an incredibly sensitive area. And I have seen nothing that defines how it's going to take place. And how you're going to protect the area. Particularly when you look at the kind of equipment that will have to be brought all the way back. Through the 800 feet to the location. The well drilling equipment, the septic system installation equipment. And it seems like this is a large impact. On a sensitive area to do this construction.
Yep, I mean, it is an undeveloped field currently. But we've designed this in mind to try to stay away from the, the important. Bordering vegetated wetland areas. And not disturb the, the majority of the center, center of the field. But during construction. The erosion controls shown on here are the limit of proposed work. So we know, there won't be any construction vehicles outside these two black lines. They'll be within that, that way right here and within the house site. And that'll all be, obviously erosion controls will be installed before construction.
Anybody else on the board have a question or comment? Okay. Let's hear from others who are interested in the project.
On the chat, there was two questions on the chat, Bill. Did you see it?
I saw one question which was answered.
Okay, I, I, it looks like there's a two on my chat.
Oh, well, that's the question and the answer.
Oh, okay.
Well, and, and my question is also, I mean. I, I, I know that we have limits about development driveways. And my recollection was something like. This is Carl's break, I'm sorry. But, but, but I mean, is there any concern about the length of the driveway?
That's what the special permit is, is for, for the length of the driveway.
It exceeds the permitted length.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hayward?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm learning a great deal and thank you all for your very thoughtful questions and, and your very helpful answers, Jackson. My, my wife and I own the property directly across Prospect Hill Road, number 25. We've been there now for seven years and we're very happy and we're very proud of what Stockbridge has done to retain. It's, it's wonderful reputation and all of the amenities that, that are attended. I guess my first question is this, how high will this house be? I see there's, I see that there's a limitation. Of 35 feet, if I'm looking at the chart correctly.
Correct, it'll be no higher than 35 feet. We don't have finished architectural roof plans at the moment, so I can't say exactly. But it'll, it'll, it's going to be permitted to be less than 35 feet.
And I have to say, Mr. Hayward, we're really only talking about the driveway tonight. The house will be the subject of a separate special permit.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that.
I don't mean to be rude, but.
Rude at all.
There's a question, I mean. It's a perfectly reasonable question, but it's going to need to come up when we, when we address the rest of this project. At some later date.
Understood, and, and I will certainly, certainly comply. Okay, as to the driveway. It's, is it crushed stone or is it, is it bigger gravel? They're different, they're different grades and a lot depends on which you choose. And which material is used as to the amount of dust and, and, you know, attendant litter that, that happens.
Yep, so it'll be a crushed stone gravel subbase. And that's usually one and a half inches diameter stone, about that size. To allow some permeability. And then the surface of the driveway will be a more processed gravel with slightly smaller cobbles. A half inch, something along those lines.
Would, would the permit, if you, if you grant it, prevent the owners or some future owner from paving the driveway?
Yes.
Because it's, it's, it's permeability is, is a, is a key factor here, I gather.
Correct, correct.
Right, okay, all right. And my other question is. Access on to Prospect Hill Road. It's a narrow road, as you all know. And having lived, lived through the last year of pandemic and increased in traffic and things. It's dangerous in some, in some locations. This is not a particularly hazardous corner. But are you proposing any additional traffic control measures on Prospect Hill Road? To slow traffic down for additional driveways? Cause there are four other lots for sale on Prospect Hill Road. Whether they ever get developed or not remains to be seen. But this is, this is a difficult entry point. Are you taking that into consideration?
As part of this application, we're not proposing any kind of traffic controls. We've analyzed the curb cut location and it meets the required mast DOT. Regulations in terms of radius of curve and site distance. So it meets those requirements. But yeah, other than that, there's no. Traffic controls proposed as part of this application. But I would leave that to the, to the board if they would like to impose any kind of conditions.
One property developed is most certainly not going to become a, a major issue. But if you add a second and a third and a fourth, you wind up with, you know, the compound effect. That's all. I was a secretary of transportation here in Delaware for six years. So I have some, I have some familiarity with, with the rules and regs. That the USDOT and, and states impose on their, on their citizens.
Yeah, we will be applying for a curb cut permit. So there'll be further addressing any traffic control issues there.
Sure, can you get that? My phone.
But no traffic controls proposed under this application.
All right, thank you for your time and for allowing me to ask some questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public?
Yes, I'd just like to make a, have a couple of questions. I used to live where the Heywards live now. And I understand why the, the owner, prospective owner of this, this new house. Wants to build why they, where they are because the view over that cliff is just wonderful. That's why Bonnie Pruden built her house where she did further north. And so I understand that. I was curious, was in, in the. Studies of this property, was anything found of the former one half mile racetrack that used to be there? Or was that further south?
I personally didn't find anything. And I dug quite a few holes on this site.
There were, the person that was the former owner of Orleton Farm. I think his name was M E I, I forget what his, his name was. He had horses and that's one of the reasons all of the barns at Orleton Farm are there. And he built the race, because he owned all of his property. He built a racetrack, half mile racetrack of this property, so.
I think it's the Proctors, Pat?
It's where the Proctors, yes, so former owner of the Proctor Estates.
Pat, do you have a, a question or concern about any of this or?
I was just, I was just, I just wanted to make a comment about why they're placing the house where they are. I think for the, for the view. And it's really quite spectacular back there. You can't see it from Prospect Hill Road unless you go back there. It's almost like a rift valley, I call it.
Yeah.
And I just wanted, I was curious about the racetrack, that's all.
Thank you.
No other concerns.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
To say hello to Pat on this, on this Zoom call. It's nice to see you.
Yes, good to see you too.
Anybody else with questions or comments?
So how do we put conditions on this, Bill?
Well, I think Christine made the point a few minutes ago about. You know, this whole question of enforceability and periodic inspection. That probably needs or benefit from a legal opinion, which we don't have. And, and I think maybe a conversation with the conservation committee. So. I, I think maybe we, we may want to consider continuing this hearing. Until we have that information.
But Bill, haven't we conditioned other things?
Yeah, we can just put the condition right under the decision.
I, I just think that I would hate to. We may go down a bit of a rabbit hole if we try to put. Some conservation authority in place ahead of this decision. And find that we have to do other things to hire that person. Or whatever is necessary to put that person in place. I think, can't we condition it and then have him monitor it afterwards if we feel it's appropriate?
I, I think that's a fair point, Wayne. The conditions, Jennifer, I was taking notes and I know you do. But I think the three conditions I heard were replacing trees. The, this erosion, not erosion, but sediment control under the driveway inspection. And not permitting this to become a road or to be subdivided. Am I correct?
I think that one of the abutters mentioned that it should stay permeable. And never be coated with black top. I'm sorry, Wayne. That's fine with me.
Okay, are those your, your record of conditions, Jennifer? Have I got this right or, or am I missing something or mistaking? Any of the conditions?
Muted, Jen. Jennifer, you're muted.
Where'd you go? Yeah, you're muted.
Lost her.
Okay, I had to. Okay, so yes, never be a road, never be subdivided. Put in trees that you cut down. Is that what the other one was?
Yeah, replicate trees that were.
Replicate, were taken down. And sediment control under the driveway to stay permeable. The driveway is supposed to be permeable and never be paved.
Yeah, yeah, I think when it comes to replacing the trees, they should be of a substantial size.
Yeah, not, not, not one inch caliper.
Do we specify a specific caliber just so, so our, our client knows exactly what they need to?
What do you, Jackson, what do you think would be a possibility?
You're talking six trees, right?
Six.
One for one.
One for one, six trees. One and a half inch caliper is the usual. It's a little less expensive to get. I think you could say about three inch caliper. When you start to get beyond that, it becomes very expensive.
I'm good with three.
Trees, they don't have to be pine trees. Can they be native trees of?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's, that's a good idea, Marie, native species.
Yeah, and not necessarily white pine just because they're taking that down. But if, you know, if you wanted to put some kind of trees that would be beneficial for.
For the area.
For wildlife, yeah.
What if we referred the, the tree selection to the conservation commission?
There you go.
Yeah, I believe we'll have a hearing with them next week, so.
I'd be okay with whatever they selected.
And the monitoring for at least two years to make sure that they get established. I think that's a COMCOM requirement usually that.
Yes.
Yeah, they, yeah, they have.
They do that.
And are, are trees normally guaranteed for at least a year usually?
For most places.
Yeah, okay, so those are the conditions unless I'm hearing others.
I would like to suggest that as part of the condition, that there be no construction vehicles. Outside of the area identified on this map.
They can't.
Well, because I said that would, when I asked about that, they said that the construction vehicles would stay in that area. And I didn't think so either. But I think that when you have the construction vehicles going on the. Soggy soil, it's going to create problems. And so I don't know how this construction can occur.
So if you're saying no construction vehicles outside the, outside what?
The area where Jackson said they were going to have the silk fence.
Yep, these, these dark dashed lines on the plan are erosion controls. And any good contractor would know that's their limit of work because of the erosion control. And if you'd like to just make that a condition as well, just to give it some more, some more backbone, that's totally fine. But yeah, they would, they would most definitely stay within the erosion controls.
Okay, that's another. Any, any, anybody else with a. Condition?
Or other. My only thought was, but just like hearing this conversation, you know. You know, in terms of monitoring, I did monitoring for the Stockbridge Land Trust for years and it's a pain in the neck.
you know, in terms of monitoring, I did monitoring for the Stockbridge Land Trust for years and it's a pain in the neck and the but the, you know, but you kind of have to do it. But I mean, maybe the Conservation Commission may have some suggestions about resources in terms of of making that happen.
Yeah, Carl, we've talked about combining forces.
Yeah.
Because we both bodies could be doing monitoring and there's no reason why if if we're going to do it, if we're both going to monitor and and we decide we need somebody to do the monitoring, we should probably have the same person doing the monitoring for both bodies.
Sure. And I I thought your idea of like making that possibly professional wasn't a bad idea at all.
Right.
Right. This is the adjacent property. It's Prospect Hill Road.
The Conservation Commission is exploring the issue and it may be actually on the town budget, in the town budget this year, depending on how the issue moves ahead to fund this type of person. So it's something that is more realistic than I thought it would be maybe even six months ago.
Okay.
Other comments or or conditions? Any other comments from the public on anything relating to this application?
Yes, it's Nathan Hayward again. I gather you'll have another hearing to discuss the design and construction of the house and other items.
Yes.
Public notice of that?
Yes.
And will we be included in that notice?
Well, it'll be public and I don't know, do we send special notices to all the butters?
Who does that permit?
With, yeah, we won't do the permit. It will be either the selectman or.
Right.
Well, you were, you were kind enough to notify us of this meeting.
As the notice, yeah, I think.
Very much.
You I mean, it will be public notice. I mean, the the hearing will be will be announced, right, Jennifer? I mean.
We won't announce it.
No.
Miss, Mr. Hayward, you were notified because you're you were in a butter within, right?
Right.
Um, so the selectmen would do the same thing if they they have a special permit for it.
And the selectmen will be looking at the design and the and the house?
I don't know for sure.
Well, can can somebody help educate me as to the next steps? And we're still in a butter and we will be and all I want is how do we get, how do we get notice of the next meeting of whichever group, I guess it's yours, will be will be convening to discuss further details of the project?
It will probably just go to the building inspector.
Just the building inspector?
I think so.
But that doesn't help us.
Right.
Isn't it a public notice on the website?
I thought so too.
In the Berkshire Eagle.
Not if it falls within just regular building plan.
Right, that's the thing.
Maybe he can reach out to Ned and have, you know, he and Ned should have a conversation.
Well.
If it fits the requirements, so it's under 35 feet, then it's hard to deny a building permit from what I understand.
And but Mr. Hayward, if you would like to see the plans, if you call the building department and just or email us and just let us know that you want to be able to see them. I can make sure that we get those out to you.
That's very kind of you. How do I, how do I reach you? Great.
And it's right on our website. You know, if you go to the town of Stockbridge.com, you'll find all of our phone numbers and emails will be right there.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Are we ready to close this special permit hearing?
Will we close the meeting?
Yeah, I mean, are we, are we, do we want to close the meeting?
Oh, I don't know. I can't get back. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, we've got the list of conditions.
Right, and I'll put that under the the decision.
Right.
But Jackson, as you may be aware, once we close this this special permit hearing, there's no further discussion. So if you have anything further, anybody has anything further, this is the time to discuss it.
Understood. I I don't have any other questions or comments for the board. So thank you.
And we have to mention that or make reference to required findings, right?
Yep. We have to close the meeting first, right? Close the public hearing?
Which comes first?
Read the findings. Go for it.
Yeah, so under section 6.3.6 of the Stockbridge zoning bylaws. Shall I just read those, Jennifer?
Sure.
Okay, before granting a special permit for any use requiring such permit under the provision of this bylaw, the special permit granting authority shall find that the proposed use A is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this bylaw and in harmony with its general intent and purpose. B is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location. C will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood. D will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. And E will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal facilities to such an extent that the proposed use of any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to the hazards affecting public health, safety or general welfare. Okay. Can we proceed to? Can I, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, any further comments from the planning board? Questions? Whatever. Okay, Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Bill?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Christine?
I'm voting in the negative. I find that the board may properly weigh the impacts of a proposed project on the neighborhood, including the impacts on habitat and natural resources. And I am concerned that
Yes.
impacts of this project outweigh the beneficial ones. So I'm voting nay.
This is to close the hearing.
Right, yep, that's what she's doing.
Okay.
She doesn't want to close it.
And.
Five to one.
It's hard to hear, so I thought we were voting on the application.
No.
No.
Just to close the.
Well, now you've heard my reasons.
You don't have to repeat.
The answer to the next question.
Right.
Yeah. Sorry, but it's, I'm having trouble with hearing as much as I would like to.
We can hear you, which is which is good. So now I guess the next motion should be to
Approve.
Approve the special permit. And I have such a motion.
I move we accept the special permit.
A second.
With the conditions mentioned, right?
With the conditions mentioned.
We've been through and that you're noting, Jennifer.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there any further discussion? Okay, Jennifer, would you please call the roll?
Bill?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Christine?
Nay.
Okay. Five to one. Passes.
Jackson, thank you very much.
Thank you all for your time.
Jackson, thank you. Very thorough.
Thank you.
Bye, Jackson.
Have a good night.
Thank you all very much for allowing us to to listen in and participate.
Sure.
Thank you, Nathan. Anytime.
So I, before you guys move move on, I just wanted to mention that Jennifer, you'll have to recuse yourself on my comment that the building inspector, it's per mass general law, the building inspector interprets and enforces the bylaw. So I know CONCOM is looking into somebody to help out with with conservation related issues. But in terms of these, our special permits and permits, it really, it really is the building inspector should be able to to do inspections.
Yeah, I think it's an interesting point, Kate. I think we in determining whether we should either separately or collectively with the CONCOM consider an outside professional, we should certainly touch base with the building inspector and if he has a strong view, we should absolutely take that into account. And and hey, if he feels competent to monitor things like sedimentation buildup under driveways and the like, then maybe we don't need anybody else.
Right, I mean, the thing is, and you're on the finance committee, so I know you know this. If you're looking at keeping your costs cost down, your municipal costs, it's those benefits, those staff benefits that that really add up for municipalities. So when you start taking on more staff, you know, that's that's where your costs can really start to rack up.
Yep. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the sign application for 5 East Street. Who who is going to talk to us about that, please?
My name is Ryle Mahoney. I'm principal at Kissler and Knapp Builders. We've been hired by the owner, Linda Mason and Roger Brown to significant renovations and additions to their property and the permit was granted last week, I believe. We have been asked, well, we've been told by their insurance company that we have need to provide a sign at the base of the at the entrance of the driveway that identifies the 5 East Street and also identifies us as builder and our contact info. So that emergency vehicles can easily identify that it is the construction site if if they need to be called. And it exceeds, I believe, the size of of what you asked for for a temporary sign. It's the one we're asking for is 32 inches tall by 44 inches wide. Simply because that's the frame size that we have that we use for our sign. And we'll also, we also typically will put below our identifying info, the name of the architect and the landscape architect, just out of professional courtesy. It's really, it's only for, we're only asking to do it for the duration of the project. It is right now, it's a 14 month schedule, but it'll come down after after the project. I could bring up a the fine mockup if you want to see it.
I think we've seen it, but if you'd like to share the screen. Go ahead.
And again, this would be a frame that's probably six feet tall. Framed by four by four posts.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mahoney, who's asking for this?
Chubb Insurance is asking the insurer of the of the Linda Mason and Roger Brown. We like, we like to pick them up anyway, just to identify the construction sites so delivery trucks aren't driving by it and then having to turn around and and make a difference with situation where they're going to turn around on East Street or anywhere else that we're working.
And so this would be six feet off the ground?
I believe so, roughly.
Is the bottom of it six feet or the top of it is six feet?
The top of it.
Oh.
It's just on four by four posts. I mean, we could set it lower if you wanted it lower, you know, we're amenable to.
It just seems pretty high to me. But that's just me.
Sure, I mean, we're happy to accommodate.
It's big. I mean, one way to scale it down is I don't think you need the the words Stockbridge MA.
Okay.
It's fine. I mean, I think it's clear what town it's in.
Right. You're right.
I don't mean to editorialize, but.
I don't, I don't disagree. We were simply putting in what the what the insurance company asked for.
I guess I've never heard that request before. I know we've we've denied on fabric fencing there at the corner of Main and Pine not long ago. This is a little different. There was an advertisement of the contractor that's doing the work. How wide is this?
It's 44 inches wide, 32 inches tall.
Big sign.
No, I I thought it was bigger. That that makes me feel better. I didn't, I thought it was larger. I mean, that's less than four by four, right? So.
Yeah, it's less than 10 square.
So it's not going to be illuminated, right?
It's not going to be illuminated, correct?
No.
So this is, as everyone knows, this is a permit. It's not a special permit, so this isn't, doesn't fall under the realm of a discretionary decision. And our bylaw is pretty clear. This is a temporary sign and the bylaw allows four square feet and that's it. So this does not meet the requirements of our of our bylaw as in the current, the current size.
So can it be, can this sign be reduced to that size?
How many square feet? I'm sorry, you broke up.
Four square feet that we, the height restriction is no, no higher than 10 feet. And the size restriction is four square feet.
So that's two feet by two feet, right? It's about half the size of what you're proposing.
I think I, at the end of the day, I think we could reduce it to the bare bones. As I mentioned, when we put a job site sign up, we don't want to offend the architects that that hire us, so we we try and put their information on there as well.
And Chubb wants what on the sign?
At a bare minimum, they want the address and our company name and contact info.
And and yours is Kissler and Knapp?
Yes.
Well, one way to get it into two by, two feet by two feet is to not practice professional courtesy and leave these two other firms out of it.
Yes.
You can just reduce the font as well.
But it needs to be read from the. Well, if you can come back a two foot by two foot sign, however you want to whatever you want to incorporate in it. Then I think what is it standing now? We're not.
So if we get it into a two foot by two foot, we still need to come back?
Yeah, I mean, I said, I think you. Yeah, I mean, I sent, I sent you guys the, the bylaw. Jennifer sent you the bylaw. So it's, it's pretty clear. Do you want me to send it to you again?
No, if you send it, we have it. That's fine. I was just asking, do we still need approval for, for something that complies with the bylaw?
Yeah, we have to see it.
We need to buy us.
Okay.
But if you, if you meet the mentions, you know, no, no higher than 10 feet and four square feet, then you're okay.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Are we done with this? I think we are.
Motion to continue. Do you have a date certain or?
Yeah. No. They can just come back with a, a new sign application. That's.
Yeah, it's, it's not a. Yeah, it's not a special permit. It's just a.
Yeah. Okay.
So I guess we are done. We don't have to take any further action. We'll, we'll wait to hear from you, Mr. Mahoney.
And you'd mock up and get it over to you with the new application?
Yep.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we need to talk about the public hearing for the bylaw amendments residential use in the downtown district, sections 4.11.1 and 4.11.2, which we've all seen. I guess, do we need to vote to propose a public, a public hearing on this bylaw?
This, this is a public hearing.
But I mean, do we, so are we, are we? I guess what I meant is, are we approving it tonight?
Yes.
There's no further, it doesn't need to go anywhere else. Uh, I shouldn't say that. I know all five of our amendments have to go to the state, but.
Yeah, it'll go to the town meeting.
Right. It goes to the town meeting and the Attorney General and all that. I get it. Okay, so I think we've all seen these changes and I have a motion to approve those changes to those sections of the bylaw.
You're muted, Kate.
Do you want to see if there's anyone from the public who has a comment?
We talk about it first.
Are there any comments from the public?
Or Nancy, did you, did you want us?
No, I didn't know if, with the, the board talked about it first and then open it to the public? Or do we do the public first and then we talk about it?
Doesn't matter.
Oh, it doesn't matter. Okay.
Well, we probably shouldn't approve it and then ask for public comment. That's kind of rude.
Well, we can talk about it.
And I'm interested to talk about it.
Right.
We can talk about it and then have public input and then vote.
Right. So we've already talked about it, right? I haven't heard any comments from the planning board. Does anybody from the public want to say anything about these changes?
Do they know about the?
You mean, my, my, my only concern is just, you know, where, where does, where does our building inspector stand with this? I mean, it, it puts more, it puts another layer of, 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 you know, complication on, on, on some of his decision-making and, and, you know, I'd be interested to know, you know, if he has any issues with that.
I don't.
We're talking about the downtown change of use, right, Bill?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. 4.11.1 and 4.11.2 is what we're talking about.
For the building inspector was involved in the initial discussion. And I think he was involved with the selectmen's review also. Is that true? Do you know?
Yes. Yes, he was.
Agenda. I was looking at the accessory dwelling unit by law. I, I'm, I'm, excuse me.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve these amendments?
And recommend to town meeting.
Can we, I just want to make a, what, I just want to express my concern before you move it to a vote, Bill. That's just, I do feel that it is reasonable. My concern has to do, and I, I probably, I think I brought it up before, so maybe I don't need to bring it up again. But I don't exactly, it's not clear to me how the pre-existing, the grandfathering is going to work. I haven't seen, you know, exactly how that will be implemented. And then I also feel that the, the original town hall, the Yankee Candle, which seems to have been the impetus for this, that, that front portion of the building has been empty for years. So to me, this just doesn't seem like an emergency. It seems like if it meets the code, it's reasonable for that, that space to be residential. And I also think there's potentially some other, a number of other properties, like the old dress shop on Elm Street. It's reasonable for that property to be residential as well. And that is, is why I'm going to vote against that, vote against this change.
Jennifer.
I just, um, the thing is, if, if it's a business now and it wants to go to residential, then it's a change of use. And so there are certain codes that, that, you know, has to be complied with. I will tell you that the Yankee Candle is closing pretty soon. I mean, the, somebody bought it. And I know with the dress shop, there's a business going in there, in the bottom part of it.
Right, but.
So, but, but if.
Business, Jennifer, that wanted, like the dress shop, supposing they wanted to go to residential on the ground floor, they wouldn't be able to do that. Is that right?
Not with this, the, not with the change in the bylaw. That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
So I have a question. Are we voting on these things wholesale or are we going to do them one by one?
We can do it however you think. I mean, there are two changes and you can do them collectively or separately.
I would feel more comfortable doing them individually.
Okay.
I would say one by one, too. I mean, Gary, are you talking about, are you talking about the parking driveway and?
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Just about 4.11.1 and 4.11.2.
Okay, so.
Is that what you're talking about, Gary?
I'm so confused.
For the, the residential downtown?
Yes.
And what's the other piece of it?
Well, it's, it's part of the same.
Okay, I'm good then.
Okay, it, it's not the ADU and the.
Okay.
Highway sign and parking that.
Okay.
That comes later.
All right. I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Okay, if there are no other comments from the board, can I have a motion to approve these bylaw amendments or these amendments to 4.11.1 and 2? And recommend them to the Select Board and the town meeting?
Did you close the public hearing, Bill?
No, I didn't.
Well, we can't.
Go ahead, Gary.
Is it one hall, public hearing for the, all of the amendments or just each one is different?
Just these two.
Okay.
But.
Move to close the public hearing then.
Okay. Is there a second to close the public hearing?
Second.
Marie. Jennifer, please call the roll to close the public hearing.
All right, Bill.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
Kate.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Wayne. Marie. Christine.
Hi.
Is that everybody? Good.
Okay, so we're going to move to actually the amendments as proposed to 4.11.1 and 4.11.2. Is there a motion to approve these amendments?
Does Wayne have to read them first?
No.
No, okay.
Can I have a motion to approve those amendments?
I move the amendments be approved of 4.11.1 and 4.11.2.
Thank you. And Gary seconded. Jennifer, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Bill.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
Wayne.
Hi.
Nancy.
Hi.
Marie.
Hi.
Christine.
Hi.
Kate.
Nay.
Six to one.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to vote on the, think back from the Select Board on the signed driveway and parking bylaws and, and vote to publish those.
Right.
Let's see. Do I need to open a public hearing or reopen a public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing yet. I have to publish it first.
Yeah, so, so we've all seen the changes, I think, unless somebody has questions. Phil's here. Welcome, Phil, if you have anything to put to Phil. Are there any discussions?
Are we incorporating the Select Board recommended changes?
During the public hearing, I think is when you do that.
Okay.
So what do we talk about now then?
Why, why can't we do that now?
Yeah, I, yeah, why can't?
Jennifer, what, what did you say, Jennifer?
Well, I mean, if the selectmen have changed it, then when we have the public hearing, we have to decide beforehand, I would think, if we were going to go with what the selectmen changed or not.
Well, it, I think we should talk about it now and do, and make.
Yeah.
Make any changes that we agree on now.
Yeah.
Right.
Does anybody have any comments about the changes?
Why don't we start one by, you know, go one at a time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Signed by law?
I agree with the permanent permitting authority, their comment on that.
Other, other comments on signs?
Let me just pull up the, the document. Do you want me to share it out, Bill? The document, the, the comments from the Select Board?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're on signs now, right?
Yes.
Yep, second, second page.
Oh, there we go. Okay, so it's just, that was their one recommendation. I have a suggested suggestion, since we got Donna's comments rather late in the game. I don't really like the idea of the possibility that there's a loophole that would potentially mean that a residence could have eight square feet of signage, even if it is by special permit. And since the Attorney General approved our signed bylaw before, I don't really see why we need to take out that word that she recommended taking out in her version.
Can you remind me what that is?
Yeah.
Hold on. I'm looking at the draft and I can't.
Yeah, hold on, let me.
Hard to read.
Give me a sec. Let me pull it up.
Okay.
I think it might be 6.84A.
Hold on. All these.
6.8. A lot there.
It's actually in 6.8. I don't know, sorry. Sorry.
I'm sorry I asked the question.
No. Well, it's kind of, it's an important question. So is Phil on?
Yes.
I'm here.
I think you know the section I'm talking about that I had concerns about.
I'm searching for it.
Three signs not to exceed 30 square feet in total? No.
No.
I believe it's 6.8.8A1. So Donna's recommendation was to take out a couple of words here. It says, "Any non-residential principal use."
And that's 6.8?
Point eight A1.
Oh, it was that one.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really see, look, the Attorney General proved that before, so I don't see why we need to remove that and then basically create a loophole. So I, I think it would be good to fix that and not take her recommendation there. Non-residential principal use.
Did she think that was redundant, John?
Actually don't have a comment for it, so I don't know the, the reasoning for. I just have the, the strike through version of that. So, you know, that portion was crossed out.
I mean, I think we can agree that loophole that allows eight square feet of sign, signage on a residential property is over the top.
Yeah, sounds like it to me.
Looks like she took it out of every one of them, non-residential principal use.
So Phil, can you fix that? How do you want to do, the easiest way to do that?
Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I did talk to Donna about this issue. Her concern had to do with some Supreme Court First Amendment issues. And, and I, I'm not, I don't have any opinion on whether it should stay in or go out. I do think if you're considering making this change, someone on your board should talk to Donna.
Patrick?
Yeah.
What was this, when was the Supreme Court issue?
I, I, I don't know, but the issue had to do with, with superseding state and federal cases. And I don't know if they were recent, Kate, or if they were, you know, before or after the last time the Attorney General reviewed the bylaw. I just think, I think that there was a, it wasn't an arbitrary change. And I would just get guidance from Donna before you guys actually, you know. make that decision.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't know why the comment isn't in this draft somehow, but, yeah, Patrick just jogged my memory. It was a First Amendment issue. But that comment should have been here in the margin, and I'm not seeing it for some reason. So if anything, I mean, it's an easy follow-up. Donna just asked for clarity of, you know, why that strike through is there? And then see what she says.
And also, can you ask her, Phil, if there's some other way to deal with this so that we don't have that loophole?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you. Right, so.
Are there other concerns about the sign by law? So we've agreed that Phil will speak with Donna. And we'll have to come back on this.
Here we go. Sorry, I just found the comment. I knew it was in here somewhere.
Whoa.
So the comment says, "I recommend removing the phrase for any non-residential principal use because whether it is permitted would require analysis of the content of the sign, which is not permitted under the First Amendment."
Oh.
And then she goes on to say, "In addition, I think it's ambiguous. Is a political sign a non-residential principal use?" So, I mean, it still probably wouldn't hurt to reach out to her for clarity on this.
Yeah, and see if you can figure out a way around the loophole.
Mm-hmm.
And just a dumb question. I sort of heard 30 feet for three, 30 square feet for three signs, but eight foot, eight foot square footage for one sign?
I don't think so, Carl.
Okay.
So it depends on the district. Carl, sorry, just looking up your name.
Sorry.
So Kate's concerns are over signs that would exist in residential districts, and the 30 aggregate square foot is for signs in the business zoning district.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil.
Sure.
Sorry, Carl, I didn't realize you were going to a different district.
So how about when we, I know we discussed this, excuse me, with changing the permits from the select board to the planning board? But I don't remember what anybody thought about that.
This came up in one of our earlier meetings that somehow the permit granting authority should be changed. And then from the Board of Selectmen to the Planning Board, and then what we're looking at now, I believe, is the most recent feedback from the select board, and they've decided that they want to remain the permit granting authority, which, I mean, that's, that's how the bylaw is currently written. So this is essentially just changing the draft back to the way it originally was.
So this person that just came for our assigned permit didn't need to come to us? They needed to go to the selectmen?
No.
That's how it used to be.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, is that there are a lot of the sign permits that, you know, they, they just happened down at the town hall, and Patrick was telling me that, you know, we meet every two weeks, so some of these things, it just makes sense to have them via the select board because they're around down there more. They meet more frequently.
Right.
Well, they always did temporary signs, and then all of a sudden, they didn't want to do them. And so now they want to do them again, so that's fine.
Right.
That was really. I think that was exactly Roxanne's concern.
What, Patrick?
I said, I think that was exactly Roxanne's concern, was just that, you know, that sometimes the timing of a temporary sign, you know, they might need it for like a, you know, whatever they're called, a yard sale this weekend, and the permit comes in on Tuesday, and, you know, we talked to Michael every day, and the idea was that, you know, on some types of signs, that, that making sure we can have a fast turnaround was important, but, you know, that's, that's, that's what I recall from our media network.
So only some types of signs, the select board one?
Temporary.
Just the temporary?
The temporary ones.
Jennifer wants to say something.
Well, a temporary sign is 10 days, and like 5E Street wanted it for 14 months, possibly longer, and that's why it came to us.
Oh.
It's not really a temporary sign.
I gotcha. Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
I mean, it sounds to me like they would like to handle all the signs, and I'm fine with that.
Yeah, me too. Let them have them.
Yep.
There you go.
They want them, we'll give them to them. I think that, yeah, if that's their desire, I think.
Yeah, they can have.
They're just kind of more involved with the day-to-day, and I think it makes sense, so, yeah.
Phil, just one question for Phil. Is it typical in other towns that the select board approves most signs or that the planning board does?
I'd say generally it goes through the planning board, but, you know, it does vary. That's just how Massachusetts is. It's different in every municipality.
Yeah. Look, I think that, I think the concern was around the temporary signs, so whether or not you want to saddle us with the rest of them, that's up to you, but I think that was what, that was the gist of the concern that was expressed.
I think I agree with Kate, that the way that this is written, it seems like this would be the authority for all signs. I don't see a distinction here of temporary or not.
So until this becomes formally a part of the bylaw, the 5E Street sign application that we heard earlier would still come back to us.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any other comments on the sign?
You know, and that's a perfect example, Bill, because there was this back and forth, and I was like, okay, you know, you guys want to come on our agenda when it, we know it doesn't meet the bylaw. I think if it was handled by the select board and Mike Canales could kind of like communicate directly with them, we wouldn't have had to have them here today.
Mike, Mike did tell us that we had to have it because they wanted, they wanted to come. We can't say you can't come, so we had to hear it and deny it.
And, and at the present moment, we're, we're the permitting authority.
So we're going to give all of it to the planning board?
Just temporary signs.
Temporary signs.
I'm so confused, okay.
No, I think it's all, it's, the way I read it is what, it's all the signs are going to go to the select board.
Why?
That's the way I read it.
Yeah, why would we not give all the, I mean, why distinguish temporary and permanent?
I, we just make it one or the other, so it's clear.
Yeah, and give it, give the whole kit and caboodle to the, to the select board.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, if we're in agreement, do we need to vote on that?
He's got to, he's got to talk to Donna about the other thing.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
So we're not going to vote on it.
Right.
But for the advertisement, you probably need to know what, for Jennifer needs to know.
I'm not going to advertise. Yeah, I won't advertise it until it's settled.
Yeah, I'll make another pass at it. revise this draft after I follow up with Donna, change the permit granting authority. That's a pretty easy one. Yeah, and then I'll submit another draft for the advertisement.
Okay. Thank you, Phil.
Sure.
Should we move on to driveways? Can you pull that up, please?
Sure.
Driveway should be pretty simple. I actually spoke with Mike Canales about this. So the reason for this strike through is because it's redundant. There's, he said that there, this is pretty much already regulated through curb cut regulations, so it's just, there's no need for it here, and then the places where it says new, that I believe that was suggested by Ned, so he's just, you know, overemphasizing that, you know, this is for new driveways going in, so if you have, for example, a pre-existing driveway that's non-conforming, you know, this doesn't apply to you. This one seemed pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah. I wonder, though, I'm thinking back to the Prospect Hill special permit that we just talked about a while ago in this meeting where the driveway, it needed, it really didn't relate to the curb cut. There had to be the ability for emergency vehicles to get into the driveway and get out. Had nothing to do with the curb cut.
But to start their driveway, they have to get a curb cut.
Right. But they also have to be in, they have to be able to demonstrate in their plans, I think, that the emergency vehicles can come in and also go out without backing up.
That's why they had that circle. That's why they had the circle bill by the house.
That's my point. If, if the strikeout is struck out, this red language with the line through it, does that mean they don't have to do a turnaround for emergency vehicles? Jennifer?
For, for the curb cut highway, the police, the fire chief, they all have to sign off on it.
Oh, okay, so.
And all that language is within the curb cut.
Okay, sorry. That, that makes sense. I got it.
I like the change to new driveways.
Yeah.
It's still, it still bothers me a little bit that it seems unfair to, it's like you're penalizing somebody with a really small lot because now they have to get variance, which is $500. And one thought I had, which I'd be interested to hear from the rest of you on, is would it be possible to, to make that variance less expensive? You know, for someone who found themselves in that situation. I mean, we have seen some of these really tiny lots down in Beechwood, you know, around the lake. I'm, I realize for the most part, you know, we're not looking at hardship around the lake, but.
That, I think, is a, is actually a quite relevant point.
Can we waive it if it's under, the property's under a certain size?
Wouldn't be us.
It wouldn't.
How would that work?
Who, who would be?
They'd have to go for a variance with a ZBA.
Oh, okay. I know, but it, that's the $500 hit, and.
Well, I know, but that's what I'm saying, is that that's not our.
Our decision to do.
That's not our decision.
Yeah. That's what I struggle with, with this one.
Yeah.
Do you happen to know the size of like the smallest lots? I mean, I just, I just recall talking to Ned about this, and he was saying that, you know, even for a very small lot, you know, two off-street parking spaces is in the ballpark of 300 square feet, and half an acre is over 20,000 square feet.
Right.
His opinion seemed to be that like even in, you know, very small lots, that this is kind of a, a non-issue, or if that for some reason there's some outlawing property that was an issue, it would be a very rare circumstance, and then, as was just mentioned, you know, probably go through the ZBA for variance.
I think. I agree, Phil.
The, the problem is they're not half-acre lots, they're 1/16 of an acre lots in some.
16, okay.
So a quarter, a quarter acre would be 10,690 square feet for a quarter acre.
And, and we're talking about smaller than, a number of lots that are smaller than that, considerably smaller.
And we just don't know. We don't really know, that's the thing. We don't know how many lots we have that are that small.
Well, you know we have some.
Yeah.
We've been on.
But
Yeah.
they have to be new lots where that there's no, no housing at this point, right?
If you have a tear down, is that now a new driveway?
No.
No.
Even if.
I think it's fine.
Even if they're reconfiguring it? I know, this is like nitpicking, probably.
Yeah, I would say, let, you know.
It would be a non-conforming lot, probably.
But that's not written into this, so.
Let's leave it as it is and leave it to the ZBA to reduce the fee if they want to.
Yeah, I think, as Ned said, it would be a very rare circumstance, and I just did the math real quick. So on a 1/16 of an acre lot, that parking area would still be, it's 12% of the lot, so it's not like it's half the lot, or, you know, something that would restrict other types of building, so.
Right.
Use it will mean less impervious surface.
And the other one, the driveway, I suppose.
Unless Wayne pays it.
Make it black.
You could recuse yourself, Wayne.
There's a joke there, but I can't make it.
Any other comments about this, or can we go ahead with it as the select board proposes? I think we can.
Yep.
Motion to approve it, move it on to a special permit hearing. Or a spec, or a.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, thank you very much.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, Jennifer, can you call the roll, please?
Sure. Bill?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
Nancy?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Okay.
That needs parking.
Parking's the tricky one. So the select board want to create an exemption within the business district for retail establishments and eating establishments. Whereas the, the existing draft that I submitted would have, there would be no regulation for any establishment. So this was one that, you know, might need some input from the select board at the public hearing to understand why there's that distinction. I actually, I did a site visit last week with Mike Canales and Christine, just to, you know, I just wanted to get eyes on it in person, and just to get some input from them, and after walking around and speaking with Mike, you know, I, I just don't really see a way to do this without lifting all the regulation. So. I wish he was here.
What if we do nothing?
If we do nothing, the new establishments that came in during the pandemic and were established do not comply with our bylaw presently because, for instance, Phil and Mike looked at that, the tables next to the Main Street Cafe in that second room and pointed out that that would require that they have five parking spaces, and there is no place in town to have five parking spaces. Then it would impact the Elm Street Market and the Los Lambs. So the thought was, because there needed to be equality, and if you have businesses, but they're not a restaurant, you have to provide parking then. So it becomes a real problem trying to determine what businesses would have to provide parking and what ones would not. Is that correct, Phil?
I couldn't have said it better. Yeah, so it's, I mean, that's really what, what I didn't understand was how that distinction was made, that there's an exemption for, it seems like the majority of businesses, so we're trying to make most of the ones that right now operate in non-conformity, we're, you know, mainly talking about eating establishments and retail, that if it's changed as suggested by the select board, then, you know, all of those businesses would be fine, but then what about the other ones? And I just, I didn't understand how we really came to that point, and, and after walking around downtown, you know, ultimately, the, the issue is inadequate parking in general. So, which is a totally separate thing from the bylaw. So I was just trying to craft a bylaw because right now it, it seems like virtually every business just. So I was just trying to craft a bylaw because right now it, it seems like virtually every business just exists in non-conformity, which doesn't really make sense. Um, so I was just trying to make it so that without any action on the part of these business owners, that they would be able to comply to the bylaw. And then, you know, ultimately there just, there needs to be more parking downtown. But that's, you know, beyond the regulation that we're dealing with now.
Right. Um, Patrick, you have your hand up?
That was from before, but, you know, my, my only, my, my concern all along has been, uh, that, that you may lose parking if you remove all requirements. And I understand a lot of people are out of compliance, but the, the, there's a couple of large businesses with large amounts of parking who would have the ability to use that parking for another use if you don't have a requirement for it.
So Patrick, your recommendation is to accept what we have in front of us then?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I think, I think, uh, uh, my recollection is, is that, you know, you, you do a, a target exemption of small businesses. And, uh, you know, and it may not be fair to the large ones, but the reality is you end up with, uh, some potential unintended consequences, I guess. If folks don't need to use what they currently have for parking, for parking, they could put a shed in or they could put tables in or they could build buildings on it. I don't know because I haven't done the analysis, but that's just my concern. It's like worst case scenario concern.
Yeah, that resonates with me.
So.
Patrick, is there a way when, I'm sorry, Bill?
Go ahead.
Is there a way like in Great Barrington, they have areas where it's two hour parking or three hour parking? Could we do that in Stockbridge?
You've got to figure out who's going to, who's going to.
Who enforces it in Great Barrington?
Who's that?
Well, then you're talking on regulations. Then you're talking parking meters and I sort of.
Oh, no, not meters. No.
Oh, okay.
No, just signs.
In Lenox, they chalk it. I don't know if we could do that here.
You have to have a person.
Yeah, they've got a kid that puts on a, a police officer's uniform and walks around with the chalk and then puts tickets on the cars.
Yeah, because I, I know Lenox has the same problem that we do with parking. We have a parking lot though.
So, um, Phil, do you see a solution here that, uh, that addresses, um, the concerns that, uh, the select board have a, and that Patrick has explained?
I don't actually. I mean, I, I understand the concern.
Yeah.
But, I mean, really I'm thinking about the red line right now. So i- if that's what the concern is over, that, that they actually do have adequate parking. And then if all regulation is, uh, lifted, then as Patrick said, you know, there could be this unintended consequence of them converting that space into something else. But, you know, A, I don't know what the likelihood of that is. And B, I don't even know how the red line is categorized because they have so many different uses. So for example, they, they have eating in there and retail. So if, uh, this exemption is for eating in retail, what's to say that, you know, they don't, you know, that they'll have their parking restrictions, uh, lifted just based on what the select board has submitted here? So it, you know, when, when we were out and walking around, it just seemed like there was, there was a lot of questions and frankly, not much resolution, um, to the parking situation.
Could you say something like, um, you know, if it's a, a hotel where people have to stay overnight, then they have to have parking?
They have to. That's, that's.
Yeah. So they can't get rid of their parking if they have to have it as an overnight business. Unlike, you know, the Cat, Main Street Cafe that just, you know, that just has people in the daytime and/or even the Red Lion Inn. If you go to eat at the Red Lion Inn, you park on Main Street. But if they, but for all of their parking, for the overnight guests, they have to have, they have space. They can't fill that in if the law is that they have to have parking for them.
Right.
But that's not the law you're proposing.
No. Could we put that in? Can we add that sentence to?
And that solves all the problems.
That hotels are exempt from this law because they have overnight guests. I mean, can't we put a sentence in there that says that?
There's other businesses that could build out too.
What?
There's other businesses that could build out too.
Like Michael's.
Well, they're a restaurant and they own that land.
Exactly.
They can put up anything they want right now. I mean, they own the land.
Sorry.
I mean, overall, you know, again, when I was there with Christine and Mike, we were trying to figure out if all restriction was lifted, parking restrictions with it within the business zoning district, what would actually change from that?
Nothing.
That's a good.
Except that the restaurants would not be non, except that all those businesses would not be non-compliant.
That's what I mean.
Change the bylaw so that the people that are downtown, you know, the businesses, I don't have to disobey the law in order to have their business, you know? I mean.
Well, if the choice is between a, a bylaw that makes everybody, uh, non-compliant.
Yeah, that's, that makes sense.
And a bylaw that, uh, uh, doesn't do that as a practical matter, uh, I'd vote for the latter. Um, and I mean, it doesn't make any sense to create something that, uh, produces the effect of permanent non-compliance.
Yeah.
By, by businesses or, or anybody else. We should, we should, uh, we should change it so that, you know, we can live with the results of a, of a bylaw that does not create non-compliant operators.
Right. I mean, those businesses don't have a choice and there's nothing they can do about it.
Right.
The other issue is that the businesses that are in downtown, the Red Lion Inn and Michael's, I think that they are responsible enough and understand if they remove their parking, they're going to lose business, particularly Michael's, but the Red Lion Inn also. You can't have a hotel and tell your guests, well, find parking and they arrive on a Saturday afternoon during the summer and there is no place to unload their car and they're not going to be very happy. So I think human nature being what it is, you want to have a parking space near your hotel. And I would hope that that's the way they would view this.
Yeah. If we have no overnight parking on Main Street, I mean, you have to in the winter anyway, then they have to have parking for their overnight guests. I mean, that's just what they have to do.
So, so following my point, can we do this so that we take, we put everybody in compliance?
Bill, the only one last point though, is it's not, it's not just an either or. For example, the Red Lion has employee parking. So it could conceivably be a situation where they recommend their employees park down by the church or, you know, uh, down by the cemetery, whatever, or behind, uh, behind, uh, Town Hall. You know, you, you don't have a situation where necessarily they're going to eliminate all parking, obviously because they want to need parking for their guests. It's a question also of employee parking, which the current bylaw requires. Having said that, you're probably right. There's probably, there, there is in all likelihood, no uh, negative consequence to this change. It's just that I think that bylaws should, should envision the worst case scenario. And in that worst case scenario, where employees of the Red Lion taking up uh, public parking spaces because they, they clawed back some of it. I know we don't like that word, uh, for, for another use. You know, you, there is some risk that parking could get worse downtown. And that's my point.
Yeah. Cause right now I think the Red Lion employees park behind, uh, that garage, right? Uh, near.
That's correct. That's the one I'm worried about.
Yeah.
That's a nice piece of real estate to develop.
Exactly.
Well, are we, are we making progress here or what? How do we want to deal with this?
I think we should advertise it for public hearing. Let's hear what the public has to say. And then we can make our final recommendations to the selectmen and the town meeting voters. Because they really should be the ones that are dictating what should happen.
So your recommendation, Christine, would be to go with, uh, for, for this purpose, go with the select board language?
No, go with our language, not require parking and put it out there for a public hearing. So we can hear from the public what their concerns are or if they like it. Because at this point, we're going round and round in circles and we don't have any real options left. So when we've run out of options, I think it's time to hear from other people and see what the sentiment is.
Does everybody?
I, I mean, I can't vote for, I would need to go with the select board changes. I agree with, um, Patrick's comments and I don't really like the idea of putting something out there that has the potential for this, uh, unintended consequence.
The problem with the select board's language is that it's not in uniformity with the zoning district. And that can create a problem when you present it to the attorney general for their review before it's become official. Cause she really gets hung up on uniformity.
So what's, what's not uniform about it, Christine? Can you?
You're, you're treating certain businesses in the same district differently with one specific use. And so that can become difficult.
Has anyone asked Donna about this?
Donna's seen this.
Donna has seen the, the select board language.
How does no restrictions, how does no restriction penalize anybody?
On that question I had, I'm sorry, Wayne, I wasn't done. Um, so Donna has seen this, Phil, and she didn't have any issue with it?
I thought that she had seen. I mean, I can follow up with her again, but she's reviewed all three of these that I, um, and I've received comments back from her.
No, but I'm talking about with the, the select board comments.
I don't know if this was, no, I don't know if that was sent to her.
That's what I'm asking.
But to, uh, to follow with what Christine was saying, you know, I, I think that that's a valid point that, you know, when this eventually goes to the attorney general, you know, she's going to read it and say, why is there an exemption for these two uses? And I think that's going to catch her eye and, you know, it, it's going to wonder.
We wouldn't print it in red ink.
Why don't you ask Donna about it, Bill? See what she says. I mean, she would know.
Okay. Well, I mean, Donna's more like, I don't know how to say it, to make sure that this is like legally binding, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's like, I don't know. The planning portion of it is trying to make it specific to Stockbridge to see what's in the best interest of the town. So upon Donna's review, that means that I think she thinks that it would get approved. But, um, but yeah, absolutely. I mean, I can send it back to her and see what she thinks about the select board language.
You know, to Christine's point, can you just ask the attorney general about it? I mean, is that possible to just run it by them as a draft and say, hey, you know, this is what we're.
They've got strict rules there that, well, and they are, they've got a whole division within the attorney general's office that just deals with this. And they get so busy with dealing with approval of bylaws that each town has to send in that they really don't want to go and spend time opening the floodgates to have drafts coming in as well.
Okay. Well, I just don't, you know, I guess my position on it, and then I know Wayne had a question. My position is that this thing doesn't seem, it seems flawed and it doesn't seem ready.
Well, let's run it by Donna, as Phil said, and, um, and, and we'll react to that. Uh, if, if she has a problem with, um, creating exceptions because the, she thinks the AG is going to say, no dice, then we're going to have to, uh, go to plan B, whatever that is.
How does, how does no restriction penalize anybody?
It wouldn't penalize anybody. The, the concern is that, uh, the few establishments that are in compliance could potentially, um, you know, build something where right now there is parking.
And they can do that now anyway, correct?
I believe so.
No, they can't. There's, the current bylaw requires employee parking for, uh, X amount of parking spaces for, for your employees based on some formula.
But there's no one in compliance. That's the problem.
Isn't any parking?
Right. And so there's, people are not in compliance with the bylaw the way it is.
There's some that are complying, like the doctor's office.
Well, then we should ask Michael's in the Red Lion Inn to contribute their opinion.
Yeah.
Would that be at the town meeting now or open meet, whatever you call it, public meeting?
That would be an opportunity at a public hearing, I would think.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Or we can simply ask them and, you know, if they want to, if they have an opinion, we can pass it along. I don't know, but worth asking.
I wonder if even asking them is, uh, you know, selective kind of, uh, zoning. I don't know. Maybe I'm being too careful. I think, Phil, you should just talk to Donna about this and see what she feels. How she feels about the select board language with respect to its likelihood of being approved by the AG.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? So I guess we're not ready to vote on this one. Are we? Anybody want to vote? I guess not. Okay. Let's see. What else? What, what are we looking at, Phil?
Uh, all new accessory dwelling units, I believe.
Yeah. Um, before we get to that, in the, because I know time is, uh, running short. It's already 20 to nine. Um, thank you for your patience, everybody. The next item, actual item on the agenda is, um, a decision to vote to accept the report of the working group on the natural resource protection bylaw. The working group being, um, myself, Christine and Nancy. And, uh, we talked with, um, Donna about this. And, uh, she, uh, recommended that we, uh, make a report and, uh, read it. It's brief, thank goodness, um, at, at a, um, upcoming meeting. So, um, I'd like to just read it. And, um, she actually asked that, uh, following, uh, my reading of it and any discussion that we vote to accept it. Doesn't mean we have to agree with it, but just that we accept the report. So here's the, the report. It's the first and final report of the working group regarding natural resource protection bylaw. Bill Vogt, Christine Rasmussen and Nancy Socia were a working group that met with consultant Jeff Lacy as he requested information and had questions concerning his work of developing a natural resource protection bylaw. Mr. Lacy asked that he deal with a subset of the planning board that was less than a quorum rather than with the entire planning board for efficiency's sake. The working group communicated with Mr. Lacy and among other, and among themselves, starting on or about November 1st, 2020. The participants exchanged drafts and suggest, suggestions on the form of a new bylaw, but reached no resolution on a draft to discuss with the planning board. The group ceased its communications with Mr. Lacy as of February 15th, 2021. Since that date, Christine Rasmussen has been computing, communicating with Mr. Lacy regarding his work. And she will report to the board from time to time. So that's the report. Are there any comments or questions about it? So that's the report. Are there any comments or questions about it? Again, um uh Donna has uh recommended that we uh vote to accept the report. Uh not necessarily agreeing with the contents, but just uh making it part of the uh record of this meeting.
Make a motion, we accept the report.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, thank you, is there any uh discussion? Uh Jennifer, can you call the roll please?
Sure, uh Bill.
Right.
Wayne.
Hi.
Gary.
Abstain.
Nancy.
Hi.
Marie.
Hi.
Christine.
Hi.
Kate.
Abstain.
Okay. Five to two.
Or five to zero with two abstentions.
Okay.
Just to not to be too technical about it.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh Phil, let's uh let's talk about the ADU bylaw, if if we can uh step on the accelerator a little bit, and I know it's not your fault that we're uh still hanging around.
No, it's fine. Um I'm going to try to do a screen share then and just get the draft up, pretty much the the draft that I submitted, it has some comments in the margin. Um many of them are just questions, so it might just be easiest if we just go through them really quickly um and try to see if we can get some answers.
Okay, go ahead.
Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. First one's easy, this, the definition for ADUs got.
Phil, I can't see it, so can you give me a second while I pull up my own copy?
Sure.
Or or can you enlarge that a little bit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tell me when, is that better?
That's better.
Thank you. Trying to move this over here.
And then Phil, I I know I've asked you this before, but is there a reason that um these drafts, the documents themselves, I'm not talking about the file name, the documents themselves can't be dated?
I mean, just like putting it up here in the title?
In the header, yeah.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, um so the first change here, um the definition for ADU got updated at the state level with the governor's economic development bill. So this is just the definition taken straight from the state, so that one seems pretty straightforward. The original draft that I had of ADUs, I believe was from the planning board, it it specifies nine hundred square feet. The only reason I called that out is just because what I've seen in other towns tends to be a little bit smaller. Um so eight hundred seems pretty typical. However, uh Ned actually called me this morning and we spoke a little bit about this because he um was wondering if they, there should be a cutoff. So essentially, if you're eight hundred square feet or less, that would be an accessory dwelling unit allowed um by right. And then if you want to go, I think he said eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet, then that would be a special permit situation. So that's um, we don't have to decide on that right now because that actually comes up a little bit later. Because as this is written right now, these all require special permit, it's not by right uses. So I wanted to see what the planning board wants to do about that, if you want to have some by right uses or none.
So Great Barrington has six hundred and fifty square feet, just as an FYI.
Which is very small. And again, from talking to Ned, that's is not recommended, you know? And the way he suggested it was the eight hundred square foot would be the max of by right, so you can still have a six hundred and fifty square foot.
You know, this is, that's what he recommends, but this is what you're here to hear from the board, so um I'm just putting it out there that Great Barrington has six hundred and fifty square feet.
I think that's exceptionally small, I agree with Phil.
Great Barrington's the only place where I've seen six hundred and fifty for what it's worth. So the, that's why I called it out, like I said before, the eight hundred seems to be what I've seen most often or most frequently.
Yeah.
This is Donna's comment, if you can read that.
I think she makes a good point.
So what is the solution? So just um, hold on, got this thing blocking my screen. Yeah, I don't think she intended to, you know, remove it altogether, you know, principal residence, that language is used later on in the bylaws, so I think it's important to have that language, but it just seems like she said, like a lot for the the town to keep track of.
Well, that's again, you know, she lives on the eastern part of the state and I think the intention here is that you don't provide an opportunity for um people to come in and just sort of like short-term rentals, turn all these properties into um ADUs. So I'm fine with the wording.
And who keeps track of it?
You could call the tax collector because the tax collector had all that information as well. Well, not where their, I mean, where their driver's license is, but if your excise taxes in Massachusetts, then they consider you, you know, your driver's license would say Massachusetts. And you could tell your, you know, where your principal residence is. But the assessor knows too, and you, all it takes is one phone call and he can click it on his computer and it'll tell you.
But who's going to do that? Or is it, again, how do you monitor that?
You mean if somebody wants to make it into an ADU?
Well, her question is how do you monitor?
It's a guideline, guidelines help.
Guideline that can be put in, but if you put a guideline in, it's it's one that needs to be looked after. So my question is, how do you look after that rec that requirement?
If they do it by right, it would be hard to tell, but if they had to get a special permit.
Again, it's a situation like monitoring the silt, the silt in the uh catch basins.
Yeah.
So it's a person that's going to have to follow that, that's, we make it by right, then you you don't worry about that end of it.
Um Dylan, looking at the Great Barrington bylaw, I mean, it's just so short and sweet. It's just a little bit over a page and I'm just wondering if we can't have something more along those lines.
That's uh exactly what I've done here. The initial draft was ten pages and you know, this is what I get it down to. There's still purpose portion, which takes up a little bit of space, but you know, it's it's a third of the length it was initially.
Yeah, and they they also, they limit um ADUs to one per property, is that in here? Do you have something like that in here?
No.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, that's a restriction seen in every one of these ADU bylaws that I've seen, every town has that part, so.
What page are you on?
What's that?
What page are you on?
First page.
For where it calls out that it's restricted to one per lot.
Yeah.
That is on the second page. Six point thirty one point three standards, second number.
Okay, and then I was wondering, kind of wondering about the purpose, provide older homeowners with a means of obtaining rental income. I mean, that's not really something you can um you know, define, so just kind of wonder about that.
Are you, where are we? You're in purpose, right?
Yeah.
A lot of these are copied from.
I mean, I guess they all look old to you, so.
Cut out the word older.
There is no age limit, right?
I can remove it, yeah.
Yeah.
Essentially copied from uh an ADU template that's produced by the state, so this isn't language that I just made up for what it's worth.
No, we understand.
But I can remove older.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, then you got to kind of change the rest of the sentence, I guess. I don't know, to make it work.
No.
Well, what you could do if you take out older is you could just stop it after the word services.
Yeah. Yes.
And and they may do it for those reasons or any other.
Good point.
They may do it for an older person to move into.
Yeah, right.
Oh, that's true.
Your in-laws, you're.
You see, my point, Phil.
Sorry, say it again?
Uh if we're going to delete the word older, um
Put a period after services.
Yeah, exactly.
And it'd strike the rest.
Oh, there, there you go.
It works. Okay, just going back down in the comments. Yeah, so this is sort of what I was getting at before, um as as this draft is currently written, um all ADUs would require a special permit in Stockbridge. Um which is fine if you want to go that route, but that's going to require two thirds vote at town meeting. Whereas based on the recent governor's bill passed in, what was it, January? Um if there are by right uses for accessory dwelling units, that requires a simple majority vote, not the two thirds. But you know, again, that's specifics to the municipality, it ju- it just depends on how you want to regulate this. You're not required to have by right uses, um so it just, it depends on how you want to proceed with this. And I imagine when this ultimately goes to a a public hearing um or town meeting, that's one of the things that's going to come up. Is how it will be regulated.
Okay.
But I don't know if anybody has any initial thoughts on it. If if special permit is is too restrictive or, you know, if you have any thoughts. Ned seemed to think, um again, if there if there was a cutoff, that 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 could sort of be the compromise, you know, so the special permit would be required for eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet. So generally speaking, you're talking about a, as far as ADUs goes, you know, fairly large ones, whereas the more typical size um under eight hundred square feet, that's by right, but that was, that was just his thought.
But why would that designation be important? Because, simply because more people would be comfortable in that space?
The size designation, that's just, that's just what we've seen in other ADU bylaws, that eight hundred seems to be a a common point. The 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 portion about it being by right is important just because that changes um the procedure of getting it adopted at town meeting from two thirds vote to a simple majority, and that's based on a bill that was just passed a couple months ago.
Right, but my my question, I didn't make it clear, between the eight hundred, if you said uh by right, but a above eight hundred would require a special permit. Why is that an important distinction?
It was just Ned's suggestion, that's not written in this current draft, it's, you know, uh I just spoke with him this morning, so I didn't honestly have time to really get into that. But I want to say that he probably saw it in another municipality and wondered if that was something that might be applicable to Stockbridge.
I'm just curious where the thought process is in that, in that distinction, that's all.
I think he found something um comparable in uh Eggermont, I believe he said. But I don't even know if that bylaw was approved or not, so that that was my other question, you know, he he sent me a draft that you know, uh frankly, I don't know where it came from, um but if you pull up Eggermont's bylaws, it's it's not in there. So that doesn't necessarily mean that it wasn't adopted, you know, their website could just be out of date, but um but I I don't have an answer for that one, but I'm pretty sure that that's the town he got it from.
Okay.
So I I have a chat question, is this a eight hundred square foot footprint or total floor space?
It should be floor space, I thought, um, hold on.
That's a good question. And we're we're not, we're going to have another opportunity, we'll have more opportunity to review this, right?
Absolutely, yeah, this was just a, I mean, this is our pretty early pass at, I think it was only the second draft.
Okay, I mean, I really, I'm hungry, I want my dinner.
This is the answer to that last question, so you know, gross floor area. So not total footprint.
It's gross fo- floor, gross floor area?
Hmm.
Okay.
Phil, I think the eight hundred feet may be part of the governor's economic development bill and how to get because the governor really wants this kind of development in the towns across the state, he changed how bylaws are approved, so rather than need two thirds to approve certain bylaws, you can now do it with fifty percent, fifty point one. And so I think if it's below eight hundred feet, you might, that might be where that came from, the um the whole, that distinction, because I think the way it's being presented, if we have, if we go to town meeting, we can separate them out and have one or both approved.
Okay.
Uh let's move on, Phil.
All right. Um, should we just did this one? Oh, this is a quick one, I just assumed that ADUs are going in the residential districts, so if the planning board can agree with that, or if you want to have ADUs in other districts, or even if you want to perhaps remove one of these districts from the list. But that's, that's up to the planning board to decide, I just put all the residential districts.
We can, we can, um, we can think about that. And then there's a question in chat from Patrick. Can we ensure that under no conditions may both units be rented as short-term rentals at the same time? Well, Patrick, there's just one per per property.
Right.
But but there's actually two, you've got your primary residence that you're only there for a hundred and eighty days on, and then you have the ADU, and I want to make sure that frankly.
Point, good point, yeah.
It would still count as two though if you rented out your primary.
Right, but you know, someone could from May till October rent out their primary and their AD- ADU, and it frankly creates more pressure, a more incentive for people to mostly buy these properties, the short-term rental properties, that's my fear anyway, it might not be true.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point, and then Patrick at the Great Barrington, did you have a chance to take a look at that?
I did not.
Oh, take a look at it, they've got site visits.
I mean, I I generally like, really like this file, I just don't want to, I I don't want to encourage short-term rentals personally, that's my personal opinion. But for one, for one, it's great, but I, two at the same time, is what I mean.
No, that makes sense, I can uh I can follow up with that and see if I can find some language, because I feel like that that has to be addressed and in another one, because that is a good point.
So it's nine o'clock, can we?
Hang on, we're not quite finished, um unless you are, Phil, any other points, I don't see any red uh red box.
Yeah, no, that that was the last comment, so I mean, the the main thing for the planning board, I guess, to just consider until we meet again is, you know, what districts you want this in and if we want to have by right uses.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Christine, thank you, Phil. This is progress, work. Christine, before we adjourn, I know everybody's anxious to. You want to talk about Jeff Lacy and Friday's meeting?
Yes, um, as everyone knows, Jeff has been struggling. With dealing with the CEE portion of our bylaw. And I have been trying to help him doing research on it. And it doesn't appear to be a issue that can be really addressed. In a timely fashion, so I would like to talk to the planning board. About having Jeff go back and finish up the NRPC bylaw. Get that so that it is ready to go. And then depending on what happens with the appropriation at town meeting. And a whole lot of other things, we could, we will have something in place that will. Following town meetings, be able to. Protect the larger lots from development that may not. Be of the character that the town people seem to be looking for. So I would like to hear if it's okay for me to direct him. To put his efforts into finishing the NRPC portion of the bylaw.
I also think that, I think that's a good idea. I think. We need to kind of just break this up, because I think it's gonna take a long time now that we've rehashed. What is historical and and what is cottage? And I think we need to get the NRPC, whatever zoning that is. You know, for the residential districts, and then deal with what we'll do with the. Other lots and how we're gonna figure out what's historic and what's not and all that, but I do think we need to get a. A bylaw in place to, like Christine said, to save. The big lots that might be developing, because I think very soon there's gonna be places for sale. That we're not gonna want to. You know, that we're gonna want to try to do a better zoning model than we do now.
Yeah.
So let, I I'd like to just separate it, get this one done, and then deal.
I I agree. Does anybody else have an opinion?
It kind of drives me nuts that we aren't. On what we were going to focus on, which is cottage era. But I think we now have gone down another avenue here. And we're further down that way than we are in cottage era, and now that we've put the designation in the hands of others. I have no idea how long that's gonna take to establish the properties, the qualifier that we're gonna consider. For that, that bylaw, so I I would agree to to focus on this other. As long as we can get on to the cottage era after that, which I just, I have a problem with that, but. At this point, it doesn't seem realistic, and we have still, I think, a good deal of discussion on. NRPC to get that to where it's going to be. We all agree on the board.
Yeah. Other other comments or questions, agreement or disagreement? Sorry, Carl, before you talk, and you're muted, by the way, Nancy or Gary, I want to get the board's views before we get to the public.
I I would agree with Wayne. I I think that, you know, somehow we got. We started off with the cottage era, and now we're on to the NRPC, and it's. It is what it is, I guess, which that one's closer to be finished than the one that. We probably should have been working on, but so be it.
Okay, Nancy, you're muted too. You're muted.
I agree with Wayne and Gary. I'm disappointed that we didn't get farther along with the historical properties. Before we did the rest of it, but I can see the urgency with getting something in place for the larger properties.
Kate, has Kate left?
No, I'm here.
Oh, what what's your view, Kate?
Well, I think you probably know that, you know, at our last. Can you mute yourself? At our last hard copy meeting. The board had agreed to a focus on. The historic estate bylaw. And sometime between that meeting, which I think was in March of twenty twenty. And the fall, a decision was made that wasn't discussed at planning board to to. To open this thing back up, and that seemed to me like. That seemed to me somewhat problematic, so I guess I would. Agree with Gary and Wayne, and I think we should be. We should be prioritizing in that regard, and I don't really see the emergency here. Perhaps there is one, but I don't see it, and. I think we should, yeah, I guess that's how I feel about it.
So it sounds like there's a clear majority in favor of Christine's proposal to have Jeff focus on. The natural resources and historic preservation zoning bylaw and to address the cottage era state bylaw. As soon as we can, after we've done as much as we can with with the NRHPZ bylaw. Is that fair?
I know, I think we were saying the other way around.
No, we weren't.
No, Bill's right.
Well, that's what I was saying.
Okay, so a- as I said, I think there's a majority. Of the members in favor of Christine's approach. Which I just described. Do we, do we want to take a vote on this and go on the record? It's fine with me. But I think it's six to one, Kate, if you, unless somebody changes their mind between now and when we take the vote. And I'm gonna get to Carl and Anita in a minute. I think we've got a consensus, so let's, let's, and the minutes will will show this, even if we don't vote on it.
That's fine, you know, I don't, I mean, if if everyone else feels that the. And our blah, 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 whatever it is, should be the priority. Um, you know, that's okay with me, too.
Okay, good. Carl?
Oh, well, I I'm just gonna ask these questions, and I'm not asking asking for discussion at all. I just want to raise them. One is, I'd be curious to read the draft of the NRPC, if that's available at this point, I'm not sure.
It's on the website.
It is, great, okay.
Planning board.
Super, I will look at it, and another one. I think that the the paragraph about regarding height. Of buildings is actually confusing and needs to be straightened out. The, the, the five percent lot coverage. It is, 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 is a considerable issue when you're dealing with like a really large property, and. And I think that that needs to take into account. You know, you know, land that's set aside for conservation restriction or what have you. And, uh, oh, I don't know, can't remember. I I left my notes downstairs, I had to plug my computer back in, but anyway, those are, but those are my questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If you're still.
I think there's a text from Gary, and it sounds like there is a misunderstanding here.
What?
Oh, I would just, you know, if there's gonna be a vote, I would vote, no.
Okay, let's vote. Let's, let's just be clear about this. So the proposal is to prioritize, to have Jeff Lacy and us. Prioritize the natural resources and historic preservation zoning bylaw. And to leave aside the cottage era state bylaw. Until we've done as much as we can on on the first one.
But Bill, if you're talking about separating them out, which I think makes sense, then it wouldn't be a natural historic. It would just be a natural resource.
Okay, whatever, and and I'm not, I'm not opining on whether we should combine them or not. I think naturally, if we're gonna work on the NRHPZ. Are we talking about a separate bylaw for cottage era state, and that's okay.
Right, but let's just be clear with the wording, so it would be natural resource protection zoning that we're focusing on, I guess.
Okay, okay. So is is everybody clear about? The, the, what's before us to vote on?
I'm not clear.
What what's your question?
So are you, are we voting on? Having Jeff focus now on natural resource protection zoning, and then. The cottage era type estate properties?
Yes.
Okay.
Phil, this is two separate bylaws, correct? We're gonna separate these out and try to get one done.
As a practical matter, I think they have to be separated.
Yes, we need to have one done.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. That's the, that's the thing we're voting on. It, it, does anybody have any questions about that?
Anita has her hand up.
I I know, but before we go outside, I'm gonna, again, I'm. I didn't say I'm not gonna listen to Anita. I'm gonna listen to Nancy first.
Okay.
No, I I was under the impression that Jeff wanted to combine the historical properties. With the NRPC.
He did, but.
Wanted to combine it, but now we're separating them out.
I, he did, but I think there was, for quite a while, there was a difference of, a different. Difference of opinion on this board as to whether they should be combined or so.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think we had committed to Jeff's approach.
When we were talking about that, we were talking about the three properties that were the cottage era. Now that we've kind of opened it to, well, what ones are gonna be historic, that's gonna take a long time. And I think we need to get the other one done, do them separate, and then work about historic. Because I think that's just gonna take us forever, and we're never gonna, I mean, not forever, but it'll, it takes a lot of thought and planning and a lot of input from. So that will be a lot longer process than just getting a, an open space residential. Um, bylaw through to to protect the properties that don't have anything, you know. Just the properties that are gonna come up for sale that we'd like to have in a open residential.
Protected.
That, that's kind of the intent, I believe.
I don't need to keep on bumping into your meeting here, but, but I just want, the fourth point was, was, you know, working with the Historic Commission. The Historic Preservation Commission, which I can speak, exists to support the planning board specifically with these kinds of kinds of questions. And anything we can do to help, you know, we would be more than happy to undertake.
Thank you, thank you. Now, Anita. You're still.
Thank you. Anita, shorter.
Please go ahead.
Just would like to say, for one thing, there's a lot of confusion there. And because there were so many different drafts that were, weren't shared in open space residential development. And NPHR and CEE, that's one thing, but what concerns me is that you have one. Member of the board presenting the opinion of the whole board and of the town without. Actually polling people to see what they really feel about things. I mean, there have been changes in. Percentage of land that's going to be preserved, there's changes in slope. I I just feel like there was questions about open meeting rules, and I think that that's what. The report earlier addressed, but I don't see the difference between a three person ad hoc committee and a one person.
The difference, Anita, is that one is permissible under the law.
I can understand a person being the contact person to set up meetings and so on. But not to speak for the town.
Who's who's saying she is?
I believe that she's the only one. I believe you said it earlier.
I did not, I did not, and if I did, it was a mistake.
Well, I'm sorry if I misunderstood. Speak with Jeff.
She doesn't speak for the planning board.
Who does she speak for?
She speaks for herself. She's an intermediary between. And the full planning board.
That's my point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's vote on this, please, and then let's adjourn. So do I have to remind people what we're voting on?
Yeah, I think you should state it.
Okay, it was Christine's proposal, and the, and the, can I call it a motion, Christine?
Sure.
To direct Jeff Lacy to devote his full attention to. The natural resources protection zoning bylaw. In an effort to get it done as soon as possible. And to defer action on the cottage era state bylaw. Until that happens, recognizing that the sooner we address that second one, the better. As a matter of efficiency, work on the one we've done more work on, get it done, and then get to. That's a long motion. Is there a second? Marie, second. Further questions, questions about the motion or? Other, other opinions? Jennifer, can you please call the roll?
Phil?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
Gary?
No.
Kate?
No.
Nancy?
Hi.
Marie?
Hi.
Christine?
Hi.
Okay.
Thank you, Jennifer, and. I hope to see all of you on Friday at four o'clock.
Could I, could I just say something really quick?
Yes.
Um, in in regards to what Anita was saying, that Christine is not speaking for the people of the town. We haven't gotten that far yet for town opinion yet. We're still working on what we're gonna present to the town. So you can't say that Christine is speaking for the town to Jeff, because she's not.
Very good.
Town members have come to workshops.
Well, you can come to the workshop, but we're, the planning board is the ones who are create, are working on to what to present to the town. When it becomes for the public hearing, then you can speak and. Maybe things will change then, but right now we haven't gotten anything that we can really change yet.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn, to adjourn.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, guys.